Hi Patty, how are you?
Your backdrop, what's where's that phone?
Um, this is a stock photo.
Is it? It's so cute.
Thank you. How are you?
Oh, good. I was just on the phone with Rick Crawford and I was trying to wrap it up so I could get over here.
Busy day?
Yeah, this is my fifth Zoom call today.
Oh goodness.
Yeah, and they're sort of beginning to wear me out a little bit. I mean, they're wonderful and they're helpful and they're all of that, but holy smokes, I got things to do. You know?
At first they made me feel human again, like, oh hi everybody, I see faces. Now I'm like, oh, I gotta put makeup on, I gotta get the green screen back going, I gotta.
Oh, hang on, I just lost you. There you are. Well, how are, how are things with you?
They're good, very good. They're busy today. I don't know what it is about Tuesdays, but Tuesdays are turning out to be a little crazy. Let people in here.
I need to grab this phone real quick, hang on.
Yep, sure, sure, absolutely. I'm gonna mute your line. Unmute all. Hi, everybody, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good.
I don't.
Okay, I'm gonna mute everybody. Everybody is on unmute at the moment. Patty's muted because she's on a call, but just so you know. So you have to watch your Ps and Qs, you're not muted.
So do you see me on video, Bernadette Paul?
I do not, sorry. I just see the, a black screen.
All right, let me see.
Okay. There's Mark, hi Mark.
Hello.
I can't wave too much, it's like a weird. I'll just nod my head. There's Marissa, hi Marissa. How are you?
Doing well, how are you?
Good, good, thank you.
Okay, I'm unmuted now.
Okay, sounds good.
Hey, everybody.
Hi Patty.
How are you doing?
Good, how are you?
I'm trying to figure out which one of my dog rescue shirts I have on today. You know, that's my curse in life.
Aw, how many puppies do you have at home Patty?
There is, wow.
That takes a big heart.
Yeah, they're all rescues, and then I do rescue for Colorado Beagle Rescue.
Aw, very nice.
Yeah, there's a lot of people that dump beagles in our area because they're not good hunting dogs, and so they just leave them in the woods.
Aw.
People really suck sometimes.
Yes.
For sure. But they're at daycare today, so it's quiet.
Very good. I can see you now, how are you? We can see your video now, good.
Good.
So we have, we have a smaller call today, which I think is a little bit perfect, especially for the topic. Right now outside my window is the street cleaner.
Oh, well, we can't hear.
Oh, you can't, okay, good. Marissa and Mark, I can share my, or share your screen at any time, so if you wanted to point that, we don't need to, I know we didn't practice that or anything, but if we needed to, I just wanted to let you know that we could do that.
My desktop is a little messy, so.
They're all messy.
I know, exactly, exactly.
Does anybody know why I keep getting a phone symbol in the middle of my screen? Like right now?
Two oh one nine six five number?
That's me. Matt Andreessen. I'm, I don't have, I have audio, but I don't have video.
Okay, that's why, all right.
Perfect, okay. And I'm sorry, who was the two oh one, your name again?
Matt Andreessen.
Matt, how are you?
Good, how's it going?
Good, thank you.
Excellent.
Oops. There we go.
Is that all right that I'm just on audio?
Oh, totally, absolutely.
Okay. I'm doing some manual labor while I'm listening in. Participating.
It makes the rest of us look good when you, when you're only at audio. We almost appreciate it. So we had seven register. Um, so we're just waiting for one or two more, but I'd like to start right on time if we can. Just because we have so much going on this afternoon, so like Patty said, Patty's on her fifth Zoom call and I have two more this afternoon, so.
This is my last one, and then it's grandkids, so.
Ah, very good.
Yeah.
That's Zoom enough, right?
Yeah. Yes.
This is my third one today, but it's a new computer I just got the other day because my other one died, and now it's doing all these weird things, and I'm like, why is this doing this?
It's new technology.
Yeah.
It's great when it works.
Yeah.
Bernadette, would you like to go ahead and get started? Should we get started?
Yeah, I'm just letting in one more, I think that's Marlene.
Okay.
Marlene, is that you?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Hey, Marlene.
Those are two that we were waiting for. And we're just waiting for one more to connect to audio and then we should be good to go.
Awesome.
Please let me know if my microphone's making too much noise slapping around.
Okay.
So what exactly are you doing?
I did some tests, internal tests this morning, and I just have some dough that I'm playing around with, some croissant dough and panna cotta.
Gotcha.
Now Matt, are you guys, are you at home or are you at the office, or how does that work?
Yeah, I'm at the office right now, we're doing minimal minimal employees in the shop at one time, so we're like cycling out between sales, with sales and service. And today, it was one of the salesmen, and I don't know if you know Dave Kohler, but he's Northeast Sales. And we put together a couple of videos today with one of the sheeters.
Oh, fantastic.
With the extra dough, I'm just playing around a little bit, and also have a lavash dough too, so.
Very good, fantastic.
Little, little something to eat later on. That's the one, the one benefit about being closed, having closed shop, I was baking quite a bit at home, which was a people benefited from.
Family always appreciates that.
Oh yeah, no doubt.
So we have our. Right, exactly. So we have our full crew on the phone line right now, or on the Zoom line, whatever this is. So we can get started. I, I think I pretty much know everybody on the call, but those who don't know me, I'm Bernadette, I'm the Director of Operations for the Retail Bakers of America. And we've been doing these town hall meetings, we're trying to do them now once every other week. I'm just because things are slowing down just a little bit, people are starting to figure out what that new normal is, so this week we wanted to touch base on our certification program, which is obviously a big chunk of our mission and and part of, a big chunk of what the RBA does, so the fact that we have a smaller group for this actually makes me feel really happy because I feel like this is such a one-on-one type of thing anyway. So if you're thinking about certification, this is such a great one-on-one time to ask those questions and get those questions answered, so we'll get started right away. We have Mark Hayman, who's a CMB, Certified Master Baker. And Mark is Dean at the CIA in New York. And then we also have Marissa, and Marissa, hi Marissa. And Marissa is our Certification Director for the Retail Bakers of America. So these are our two main people for the RBA who put on our certifications, organize them, get the testing equipment all correct, all of that good stuff, those are these two wonderful people who do that. So I'm gonna mute everybody's line except for Marissa and actually, you know what, if it's okay, because there's such a small group, we'll just leave everybody unmuted. If it gets loud, I'll try and mute whoever I think that is. But if you're okay with that, I think this is a small enough group to, to do that with, so. Marissa and Mark, you can take it away.
Yeah, so like Bernadette said, I'm Marissa, I'm the Certification Director at, at RBA, and so anytime you submit an application or have questions about certification, I'll be your point of contact along the way. So I think the way we wanted to structure this is I was gonna let Mark kind of introduce some of the benefits of certification as a CMB. And then I was gonna go through the step-by-step process of how to, how to start your journey as a CMB or CB, depending on where you are in your career. So.
Sounds good, thank you. I appreciate it, thank you. One of the biggest things that, with the RBA, we have a lot of people inquiring about certification and we're trying to go ahead and get them to follow through with the certification. One of the biggest things is if there's any interest at all, I gotta tell you, it's positively, absolutely, without a doubt, one of the best things that you can possibly do for your career. So there's a lot of people out there in the industry, and the biggest benefits, I guess you could say, for getting certified, especially through the RBA, it shows your skill level and it shows that you're motivated. So when employers are taking a look at any individual, you need to be able to stand out, you need to be able to go ahead and differentiate yourself from the crowd. So with our certification, it is very, you're probably gonna hear it several times throughout the call, especially for me, it is very different than what it was five, six years ago. So we've streamlined it, we've made it more relevant, and we've just added a whole lot of it's, it's advantageous to take a look at all the material. So what it does is it showcases your ability to go ahead and produce products in a retail setting. So it's not an easy test, I'll be honest with you. People don't want to hear that. But you have to understand that with Marissa, myself, there's a lot of folks behind you, if you've taken that step to go ahead and register, to have an inkling to go ahead and become certified, realize that you have an enormous amount of support. A lot of people that, from study guides to one-on-one coaches, there's reading material that we can point you to, there's just an enormous amount of folks in the background that wanna help you to go ahead and go forward. This is sort of like, if you've ever done competitions, food shows, or anything like that, it's where anybody that puts themselves out there, my hat is off to you. So if you're going for that certification, please realize that it's a journey. You're gonna learn a lot about yourself. You're gonna, I'll tell you right now, you're gonna learn a lot more about baking, about our industry, about food safety. And it's gonna, no matter any of the results, you're gonna come out on the other side just a much stronger individual. And I gotta tell you, you're gonna feel better about being in our industry, about being a baker, and having those, those letters behind your name, it's it's uplifting, I gotta tell you. So it's a very, very good thing. And again, the first step is to contact us to go ahead and talk with Marissa, she's our contact person. And she can go ahead and, I'll turn it back over to Marissa if you want to go through just the process. It's pretty much, I would say, how would you say it? It's streamlined online.
It is, it's pretty much a three-step process. You apply, there's a written component, and then there's the practical, and I want to also add on to what Mark was saying, is we want this to be, it's not meant to be an impossible test, we want to set you up for success. We provide you with recommended formulas, we provide you with the grading rubrics, you have those right off the bat. So you know what you're being graded on, you know what to expect. We have lead judges, a lead judge assigned to each practical that you can communicate with daily if you want to send pictures, ask questions. We want you to be successful, we want this to be an opportunity for you to add those letters to your name for this, you know, to showcase your abilities as a professional. So I'll start going through the process a little bit. So we have three different levels of certification for bakers. And I'm also very happy to announce that we now have two different levels of certification for decorators. This is an announcement for this call, you are the first to know. We are launching our Certified Journey Decorator Exam. That's our, our, our first level of decorator to coincide with the Certified Journey Baker Exam. So we, like I said, we have the three levels of baker, Certified Journey Baker, Certified Baker, and then the Certified Master Baker. On the decorator's side, we have the Certified Journey Decorator, and then the Certified Decorator. So the process is a little different depending on what level you're going for, for our Journey, Journeyman Certification Levels. It's a two-step process, you apply, and it is an online written exam. We use a program called Exam Builder. We send you a link, you can do this at your own convenience, from your own computer, from your home. Right now for our members, we are offering those certifications for free. It's our, kind of our gift to you as it, as members. So you have something that you can work on, you know, while, if you're trapped at home, if you have this extra time. And we hope that, you know, that can kind of inspire the process for you. So that's a two-step process. The applications are all online on the website. If you go to the Certification tab on the RBA website, if you familiarized yourself with the website, it's right there. You fill out that application, you can mail it in, or you can scan it directly to me. My email's on there, or there's also a certification at RetailBakersOfAmerica.org, that's also me, so either way, it comes to me, I'll be processing the application and then send you that exam link. The first step of the process is the same for the Certified Baker, Certified Decorator, Certified Master Baker. Those two steps are the same, you submit your application, I send you that exam link, that is your first step, before taking the practical, you must pass your written exam. For the Certified Baker, Certified Master Baker, once we accept your application, along with the email that I send you, this is congratulations, you're underway to becoming a Certified Master Baker, I will send you a study guide for the written exam. At that point, I, I do not typically send a study guide for the practical, that comes once you've registered for a test site. That's your step, that's your step 2.5, right? Once you have and are on your way to taking the the prac, the, the written exam, you can register for a practical exam. Once your application has been accepted, you have two years to complete the process. Like I said, we want to set you up for success, we understand that bakers have busy lifestyles as well, also, and that these exams require travel. We are somewhat flexible with that two-year time span. If there is a, you know, there's an exam coming up in New York, and you are in New Jersey, and that's the most convenient place for you, but it's two months after you know, your two-year date, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna let you go to the New York exam. So that is not, you know, it, three years, it's more questionable, but if it's kind of within that timeframe, we will work with you. Because we know that this is a commitment of time, it's a commitment of money, it's, it's, you know, that, it's, there's a lot building up to it. So we want to work with you on that. We try to offer at least three, four practicals per year, that's the goal. Right now we have two on the calendar, right now scheduling things further in advance is complicated due to the current situation. But typically, you know, we have, want, want to have at least three, four up on the website for you, so again, you can plan in advance. So once you find a practical that works for you, you contact me, there's a registration fee for that practical, and then we'll send you the study guide. The reason we wait to send you that study guide until you register for the practical is that the exam isn't identical from exam site to exam site. We vary the products that you will be producing. At this time, we often send the formulas as well, as well as the grading rubrics. Depending on how, if you register for it a year and a half in advance, we might not have those materials ready quite yet, but we will get them to you months before the practical happens. So we'll send you the recommended formulas. One of the big questions we receive about the formulas is do I have to use these recipes? I have a, a scone recipe that I've been using, and I feel more comfortable working with that. Yes, you may use your own formulas. The only thing we ask is that at least 30 days prior to the practical, you send us those formulas, so we can just take a look to see what you're doing, and also to see if there's any other ingredients that might be different from our recommended formulas that the test site will have to order. So you're more than welcome to use your own recipes rather than ours if you choose to do so. Do I have any questions so far? I just feel like I've covered a lot of material. No. One of the other top questions we receive is I have, you know, 10 years, nine, nine years of experience, should I wait a year? Because the, so to, to, to go back a little bit, for the Certified Baker, you need four plus years' experience. For the Certified Master Baker, it's 10 plus years' experience. So I have a lot of people asking, you know, I have nine years' experience, should I wait a year and take the Certified Master Baker Exam, or should I take the Certified Baker Exam? And my advice is always to take the Certified Baker Exam first. It's, it gets you kind of indoctrinated into the process. You can think of it, if you have, you know, a lot of experience, if you're close to being ready for the CMB, it's a good practice run for you. You get, you become very familiar with the test, because the, the written exams are relatively similar. There's, you know, higher level and more questions with the CMB, it's 100 questions versus 200 questions for the CMB written exam, but it, it gets you more comfortable with the process. One of the biggest failures with the CMB is people get, you know, it, it's, it's very stressful. Our lead judge, our, our one of our key players in this, in coordinating these CMBs is Leanne Adams. She's one of our lead judges, and she always describes the CMB as your worst day at work, no one shows up, nothing's prepped, and there's no one there to help you. So it's a mind game, so taking the CB beforehand is only gonna benefit you because you get used to the process. So there's a little less buildup, there's a little less anxiety maybe than when going for the C, the CMB. So I would always recommend doing it in that order. Depending on, you know, you know yourself also, so if you are kind of relaxed and, and feel like you're ready to do the CMB, then that's, then that's the way to go. So any other, any questions so far, thoughts? Mark, do you have anything to add?
One of the benefits is when you do take the test, you get feedback. So a lot of times, I've taken other certifications, other tests, where you put yourself out there and you're not really sure exactly, you know, maybe why did you get the score of this, why, you know, why did this person pass, why did this person not pass? But again, just what Marissa was saying, the grading, the rubric is presented to you before you actually take the exam. And after the exam, the lead judge, the other judges involved will go over the products with you. So we realize there is variations from East Coast, West Coast, Central USA, everybody has their way of doing things. And Marissa, she alluded to the fact that not all the products are the same at every test. So a lot of times, we do change things up, but we're always looking for the core competencies, so we're looking for the creaming method. So honestly, pound cake versus chocolate chip cookie, we're looking for your competency, we're looking for skill level, and also being able to go ahead just following, following directions. So you do not need to use the, the formulas that are provided, we do provide formulas for most everything. If you want to use your own, yes, of course, you can bring in your, like she said, the, your favorite scone recipe. And at the very, on the day of the exam, there's a couple of items that are revealed on the day of. And usually that'll involve a little bit of baker's math, and we go over that, some study guides. Just if you're given a recipe that makes 400 loaves of bread, and you have to go down to three, so how do you go ahead and do that? Very, very straightforward, and again, you have the support, if you're not positive how to do this, how to do that, if you're not really sure, when we're talking about elimination. Some folks are very comfortable using a sheeter, some people still like to use the, the rolling pin, whatever. Whoever your key person is, we give a, Marissa, what, what's the right term? A key person, a
Advisor.
An advisor.
Advisor.
Yeah, an advisor to you. You can call that person, well, please don't call them four times a day, but you can call them up, you can talk with them, and well, it says this, what, what do you mean by this? So when it says different shapes, well, is this really enough of a different shape? So you have somebody to go ahead, and a lot of times, you feel that, when you're taking a test, you feel sort of isolated. That's not the case with the RBA, you have somebody to bounce things off of. So again, it just, you have a wealth of folks behind you to set you up. If you do have issues, and yeah, anytime you go to work, there's always something that happens. And you are the best baker in the world, you know something, your cake comes out fantastic, your baguettes spot on, and you know something, your chocolate chip cookies, you had one of these brain things where you left them in the oven, and they end up looking like our work shoes. A little dark side, things happen. All right, so it's not the end of the world. There is, Marissa, can you go over, if they fail one portion of it, they're allowed to take that one portion again?
If they fail two, they're allowed to take each of those products individually. So let's say you fail a croissant and a cake decorating, for example. You can schedule to take just those individual items, and you pay per item rather than having to do the whole exam again.
The biggest thing we see with folks that have issues with the test is they're, they take it too lightly, they don't practice. And one of the things that we do religiously is, because it is the Retail Bakers Association, a lot of things have to do with weights, measurements, counts, so if your baguette is supposed to weigh 14 ounces at the very end after it's been baked off, you have to account for moisture loss in the oven, things along those lines. So just trying to, excuse me, wing it, just does not work. So the more that you can practice, I gotta tell you, it'll, you can tell the people that practice and the people that did not.
And all, again, all of those weights, all of those expectations are very clearly presented in the study guides and on the grading rubrics as well, so they're, they are no surprise. Just to, a little bit about the day of the exam, there's always an orientation, it's, it's a two-day practical for the CMB, it's a one-day practical for the CB. It typically happens over a weekend. Typically, we host them at different schools, so it works best with their schedule to do it over a weekend. So we'll have a Friday orientation, it's about two hours in the evening, where you can ask questions about the oven, or yourself with the space, settle in a little bit. Then that's the kind of the, the day to ask all the questions, is also when any undisclosed products will be Then that's the kind of the day to ask all the questions is also when any undisclosed products will be revealed. So if there's an undisclosed creaming, typically we do, well, we're going to give you that recipe and we're going to let you know what it is. Or an undisclosed bread is another thing that we do on the exam. So you will know what that is that evening. So you have the night to kind of think about it and prepare. On the Saturday and the Sunday, there's always a breakfast offered. So it's a 6:30 kind of breakfast and then a 7:00 AM start when we, and we always begin with the math, math portion of the exam. Well, there'll be some conversions of baker's percent. So the exam starts with that. And then you, once you finish that, you can enter the bake shop and get started. Production goes from 7:00 AM till, well, the math portion, you get into the kitchen after that. And then it ends at 3:00 in the afternoon. And then there's two hours of cleanup typically in the evening. Saturday, the same, there's a breakfast. There's also a mandatory lunch break. You must eat lunch. You just take 20 minutes and go and eat. Lunch is provided. But we kind of check in and check out every single candidate, making sure they are taking their break of 20 minutes and coming back in that entire 20 minutes of time. Mark had mentioned that you do get feedback on the Saturday. So the evening of the exam, you will find out whether you have passed or failed. And you will sit with the judges and they will talk to you productively about your products. They will tell you the things you did wonderfully. Even if you passed everything, they will, they will give you some feedback and critique to help you continue to learn and grow. Again, that's our goal. It is not an impossible exam. It is a hard exam, requires a lot of preparation, like Mark said. But ultimately, we want it to be something that inspires growth in the industry and in individual bakers. So you will get feedback that evening. And it's really fun to see also because you see the, all of the bakers that are in the same exam. There's like a unspoken forever bond between those people, it seems. And, you know, I've had a lot of bakers like the, on our past San Antonio exam in past, this past, not this April, but last April, that have told me they keep in touch to this, you know, they keep in touch and have become kind of allies in the industry. So it really, going back to kind of the benefits of this, it really does a lot for networking within the industry and gaining friends in the industry as well.
Marissa, can you go through, so each day? So if you're doing the certified baker exam, you're just testing on Saturday. If you're doing the CMB, you're Saturday and Sunday. So just what those, what a typical day would look like. I know you just did it with the baker's math and then you, or the baker's math and then you get into the bake shop, but just, you know, what that looks like of setting up your station and products that need to be done at a certain time and then, you know, that kind of thing.
Sure, well, everyone sort of develops their own timeline. And again, our judges are happy to look at those for you beforehand. So if you've developed a timeline for the products, which I recommend doing before you get into bake shop, we are willing to look at those for you. So with the CMB, there are typically 11 categories of products. One of those being sanitation and professionalism. There is always a lean dough. There was always a enriched dough, a laminated dough, cake, typically a high ratio cake, an undisclosed creaming, an open roll category, an open category. So there, sometimes we include a candidate's choice as well. With the candidate's choice category, that is a product that needs to be approved by us at least 30 days ahead of time. Again, so we have ingredients so that we know that we can verify it's a master baker level product as well. And sometimes we'll put restrictions within that. Again, for example, in the last exam, we asked that all the candidates do a choice of breakfast pastry. So that there were, there were some confines to, to what that could be. And then there's a quick bread. Sometimes that's disclosed, sometimes that's undisclosed. And then there's a decorating component. So you make the cake. Typically, we do eight-inch rounds and then a quarter sheet. And then those are decorated as well. The round is done with a timed, you have to enrobe it within six minutes. Fill in and robe within six minutes. And then there's a specialty bread. So it's a lot to juggle. And again, it requires developing your own timeline, knowing, part of, part of the exam is knowing the best way to time out your products, right? The ovens at the exams, temperatures obviously need to be changed depending on what products you're working with. The judges manage the temperatures, so nothing gets changed. So we don't want any oopsies like, oh, I didn't know so-and-so's product was in the oven. I turned it up to 400. So, so the judges manage the ovens. You can go to the judges and say, hey, I'm going to go in this. Can I turn it up to, can I turn it down to 350? And we say, sure, go ahead and we'll, we'll go and change it. The judges will go and change the oven temps for you. So that's typically the, the process. Yeah. Yeah.
I'm going to unmute everybody's line and that way we can start the discussion. And you are all unmuted. Well, some of you are. There we go. So if there are questions, now is a great time to do it. And especially like we had mentioned at the beginning of the calls, with such a small group, this is definitely the time to ask Mark and Marissa, you know, let them know what you're thinking, where you are in the process. If you'd like to talk about products or timing or things like that, that would be, now is a great time to do that. So we'll just open up all the lines and if you have a question, feel free to hop in there. Or we covered everything and you're good to go.
So you said the CMB is a two-day and you mentioned Friday, there's an orientation on Friday. Is it Friday and Saturday? Or is it Friday orientation, then there's a Saturday and a Sunday? All of this?
Friday orientation and then it's a Saturday and a Sunday. And those are very full days. It's all
They're both seven to three, both days?
And then there's two-hour cleanup. So you, on our, on our schedule for the day, we put the production ends at 3:00. Everybody stops what they're doing and then we have two hours there at the end for cleanup. We do have student helpers at every exam. But candidates are responsible for their own dishes. Students are there, help candidates with an ingredient or piece of equipment. They are familiar with the kitchens, they do that and they have breakfast and lunch. Candidates are responsible for their own dishes.
And you get your own bench and you, we make sure that you have enough scales. Well, if you want to bring your own scale, you can do. Well, we make sure the, everything that you need is right there for you.
So yeah, I was looking at the lineup and I'm thinking, boy, that's a lot of products to produce in that one seven to three on Saturday. It's not right here. I'm out, I'm done, I'm out.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. All right. Thank you.
Something that we've started doing too is collecting timelines from past CMBs that we are happy to
What was wrong with it?
That candidates can take a look of what, what other candidates have done in the past.
So is the lineup of product given to you for each day? Do you choose it from the lineup? How does that work?
You can do any order, you can, we don't care what order you produce the products in.
Okay.
As long as you get it all done and do it well.
Okay.
Yep. A lot of people, some people like to do kind of the quick, easy stuff, the quick, quick stuff. Not necessarily easy, but the quick stuff and to be like a creaming, they bang it out, they get it done. Some people like to leave that in the end. We had one CMB that on day one, a lot of people do all their, the decorating component. Day two, we had one who piped all of her roses and stuck them in the fridge. Day one, you know, just really depends on what makes you comfortable and what sort of kind of your pacing as well. Some people, day one, kind of are scrambling by the end of the day because they're not quite where they thought they would be. Other people find they have a lot of time. They were more cautious, not a lot of time, but a little extra time on day one and they can do things like pipe the roses or whatever it might be.
Yes, yeah, a lot of folks, after day one, at the end of day one, they feel confident. They feel secure, they got this. And then day two hits. A lot of times, it just, if you're ahead of the game, we ask you to stay ahead of the game. It just where the timing for everything is extremely, extremely important. The second day just seems to get away from you very, very quickly. So I'm not sure who all is on the call, who has their own bakeries or whatnot. But just if you're thinking about the CMB, please also talk to the rest of your people. The journeyman baker, the certified journeyman baker, certified decorator. They are, help me out, Marissa, they're free right now?
For members, so.
Okay, so the whole idea is to get them enthusiastic about the process. And what's happening is they're learning a little bit more. There, it's free to them, it's free to you. And they're going to learn a little bit more about the products that they're using. They're going to learn a little bit more about food safety. It's only going to help your business. So I would highly recommend taking advantage of that.
Yeah, adding on to that, I mean, part of the CMB is, yes, you have the practical skill. You can create the products. But we also at RBA want to make sure you know the whys of the process, right? Why lamination does what it does, right? Equipment knowledge. There's some, again, baker's percentage questions on the written exam. So we want to make sure you have an in-depth knowledge of the industry, of the products, ingredients, equipment.
Okay.
And again, there's a study guide for that, so.
I have this, I've had the study guide for about 18 months. And this is, this is where I'm at, sitting in this meeting right here. Because I have that much extra time.
Are there any other questions for Mark or Marissa? Definitely now is the time to do it. If not, we'll, I'll, we'll be sending out all of their contact information as well. So that way, even after this call, you'll think of something or you'll want to get the process started if you haven't already started the process. So we'll send out your contact info, or their contact information to you. So you have it. Also, along with that, we'll put some, maybe the application, Marissa, and some different connections and things that you would, you would need to get the process started if you haven't already. Marissa, we have 13 on the call. So if you want to give our special discount.
Sure.
I'll give you a drumroll, but I don't know if you could hear it.
Yes, so for those of you who are on the call, we are offering a special discount for those who have attended the meeting. Since we, so we are offering a 30% discount to anyone who is on the call for the certification process, so.
That's good.
I have a question. Has the manual been updated or revised? I think I have a manual that's about five years old that I've never completed.
Yes, there, there is a revised manual. Yeah.
So Nick, just to let you know what, what they've done, Mark and Marissa, in the last few years is we really have revised our entire test, the process and every, and every, really every aspect of it to bring it up to relevancy for today's retail baker. For a long time, it was the same test for a very long time and it, you know, there were some ingredients that were being used that people just don't use anymore. So now our exam is up to date where it is products and ingredients and equipment even of the typical retail baker now.
So if we, if someone like myself who, who paid for this but just never followed through, can I get a copy of the revised one or do I have to pay again?
So Nick, let's get you in touch with Marissa after this call is over. And that way she can take a look at when your application was handed in and accepted, all that good stuff. That'll be the best way for us to determine where you are in that process. And then we can kind of go from there. We're glad you're on the call, though, that's great. You're thinking of doing it at least, so that's a good start.
Yeah, I got a little confused with the Central and the Pacific time and I'm on the East Coast, so it threw me off.
Oh, no worries. No worries. No worries. Any other question? Oh, sorry.
I was just going to say, please don't hesitate to reach out to me via email with any questions. I'm happy to answer all questions certification. So I think I'm pretty appreciative.
You've got the real mean smile.
Can you talk more about the cake decorating certification?
Sure, absolutely. So like I said, we have two levels of certification for that. The certified journey decorator. And that is online-based. There's also a video submission with that, which is a simple enrobing, bordering and writing on a cake. We also have the certified decorator for that. That is a one-day practical. So with the, with the practicals, the certified bakers and the certified master baker exams happen at the same time. So while you're taking an exam, there might be people taking the certified master baker exam. There might be people taking the certified baker exam. With the decorator, that is, that we schedule separately. And we just had one that was supposed to be in May and unfortunately, due to the current we will not be having that exam, but we will be rescheduling it soon when possible. But that is a one-day exam. And I can pull up just a second. I'll pull up all the information on that. All right, I'm happy to send you the production sheet for that. That one involves wedding cake, several different decorator boards. So we have you do like four different sheet cake boards and several different rounds with different types of flowers.
And Marissa, they're not making the cakes, correct? They are just, it's
It is strictly decorating. So we'll be, you are provided with cakes. If you are using, some of them will, will have cake dummies for you. Some of them will be real cakes, we'll, we'll tell you which are which. So for this, for the certified decorator exam, there is frosting production and a speed test, which again is, which is stacking, enrobing and bordering a cake. There's a three-tiered wedding cake. There's a, there's one eight-inch rolled fondant cake. There are six different nine-inch cake boards with undisclosed, with certain disclosed themes, three-quarter sheet boards of different flowers and sprays. There's one sculpted cake and one cake with chocolate decor.
Thank you.
And that's a one-day exam.
Okay, thank you.
And again, with that, ahead of time, you get all of the grading rubrics. That's a, that's a, that's again, an exam that we've newly refurbished. And so this past, this May, it was supposed to be sort of a launching of that. So a lot has changed. And just email me, I'm happy to answer any questions about that and the different expectations for the, for the different cakes to be decorated.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions before we sign off here? Again, I'm going to share with Mark and Marissa all of your contact information. So they will be in touch and then that, you'll also have their information too. So any questions that you have that come up or about the application or like Nick said, where you are in the process. which exam you think you're prepared to take or which one you'd like to start. Again, I'll also give everybody, or Marissa, everyone who's on this call so that you do get that special discount just for being on this call. We really do appreciate you taking the time to be on this call, learn a little bit more about our certification program and hopefully get the, the process started with that discount. So any other questions at all? Who's ready to get certified? Well, the half of you are in video, so I'm just assuming the other half raised your hand. Very good. Well, we appreciate you taking the time to be on this call today on, on behalf of everybody with the Retail Bakers of America and Patty, our president, and Mark is one of our board members and, and our staff members and, and everything. We really appreciate you being on the call and we will be in touch shortly with all that information.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, everybody, have a great day.
You too, thank you.
Bye-bye.
Bye.